Hello 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 beautiful people, how are you guys doing? Welcome back to the live stream. Today we will be continuing our series of Japanese learning and today's goal is to complete the Hiragana completely. In yesterday's, in previous stream, not yesterday, I'm so sorry, I wasn't able to stream yesterday. But in previous stream, we were able to complete five columns in Hiragana. But today we will be completing the Hiragana and let's just not waste any moment and let's get started because we are already late. I want to stream at 10 but due to some technical issues, I wasn't able to stream in the beginning. But then yeah, here I am. I just had a, had that in my mind that I'll not miss today's stream at least on this weekend. Because I haven't done a weekend stream for a while and yes, when I am with you guys. Let's just wait one minute for other guys to settle in and we'll just prepare some resources for you guys. I'll just open up all those things we need in the stream. Yeah, you guys with me? I mean, I think you guys had practiced previously when we didn't stream. I mean, if you didn't practice, you were wasting your time. Because I did practice, I wasn't able to stream but it did practice of those five columns which we did in the previous stream. Yeah? Okay, let me open the resources we need to practice and let's just do one thing. Let's just test the memory, how much we can remember from the previous stream. Maybe we completed the five columns and we practiced the five columns as well. Let's just practice those first in this stream and let's just practice those five columns and then move on with the other columns which are left in the series. Okay? Let me open all the booklets and the resources you need and then I think I, we have waited much time, we have waited enough. So everyone can settle in. So let's get started with the series. Let's go, let's learn Japanese together, let's go. Okay, so here we were, this is Hiragana's start and for all those people who are joining in new. This is, sorry, my bad, I wanted to say this in the starting of the stream but okay. So everybody who is joining you, welcome to this stream, this is me Ronit and in this journey, I am learning Japanese. So this is the first time as well, I'm learning Japanese with you guys so that I can, I'm just live streaming my Japanese learning pathway with you guys so that you can learn with me. And I mean, this gets a motivation for me and you as well, so you can learn a new language. And the ones who are joining me regularly, thank you so much and you stay with me, we'll be completing the Chinese Japanese language in this year. I mean, our sole resolution for us was to complete this language, right? So yeah, okay, so, okay, we have completed the first five columns, right? A, sorry, not A, so okay, once again, pronunciation in Japanese language is very crucial, crucial, true, right? So it's A, E, U, A, O, K, 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 repeat after me, repeat after me and you will learn better. I mean, I'm not the one, I'm not the speech coach which will pronounce it correctly but I'm a beginner like you guys if you're joining me as a new one. And I mean, everybody makes mistakes but we'll be practicing it every day so that on Monday we'll be able to speak it fluently. And we all go Japan together, let's go, okay. So it's A, E, U, A, O, K, 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 S, S. So there were exceptions over here, Sha and Su, Su, it's T-syllant, Su. So Sa, Shi, Su, Se, So, Ta, Shi. So it smells not T, it's Shi, Shi, Su. Oh, this was Su, my bad, my bad, so this is one Su, this is Su. Sa, Sa, Shi, Su, Se, So, Ta, Chi, Su, Su, Se, To, it's Su, T-syllant, it's here, this is a T-syllant. And Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No, so these were the five columns which we completed till Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No, okay? And today we will be continuing our journey to complete these two major columns and these ones were leftovers. I mean, I'm not sure why are these blank spaces over here, so we'll be following this blog. I have all the permissions to use this blog in my live streaming, so don't worry about this, we can use this blog till the time we complete Hiragana, okay? And this blog is very helpful, thank you to the team to give your blog and yeah, I forgot to show these other resources we can, we are using in this live stream. All of this are mentioned in the description box as well, so you can go and check it out and enjoy those resources. And I'm using this edit post to learn the mnemonics, I mean, some mnemonics. So we use in Japanese language, in any other different language, we use mnemonics to relate an alphabet with it so that we can remember it efficiently. So that's why we are using mnemonics and okay, let's just move forward with it, we were, we have completed Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No, Na. And Line, we have completed, we'll be moving forward with H-line, yes? So this was last, this is the last No, so we have to start with this. And so these are the, these are the two columns, these are the two columns which are remaining. H and M and these are the ones which we have to complete today as well. I mean, our goal of today is to complete at least three, every day our goal is to complete at least three because this third column is not that much bigger. That's why we have increased the goal of today because so we can, we can spend more time and I have no office tomorrow, so I can spend more time with you guys. And we can complete these three columns as well as those three lagging around right now. Okay, so we will be completing Hiragana today and we'll be practicing Hiragana tomorrow as well. So I'll be streaming both those weekends, both the weekends and now we'll be practicing and covering everything on Hiragana today and tomorrow, okay? So let's just straight jump into the practicing the remaining two columns, major two columns and then other columns as well. So okay, the first things first, let's just practice everything which we learned previously. So okay. Let me, yeah. Okay, so everything is working fine, let's, let's get started, okay? A, E, U, A, O, so these are the words we have to write the Japanese counterpart of all those words, right? I'll just write it carefully. A, E, U, A, O, next one was? It's a, from G or, I mean, K and S, okay? I think I messed up with the order, okay, I messed up with the order. Let me, I thought, A, E. A, E, U, A, O, K, 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 N, Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No, or Sa, Shi. Sa, Shi. Su, Se, So. And another one's that, Ta, Ti, and Na, Ni. K, Ti, Tu, Te, To, and Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No. Done. You guys with me, let's get practice, let's just start practicing and let's just hope we pass this test. So our test here comprises of fifty percent marks, we have to pass this, for passing this test, we have to at least cover fifty percent from our memories. From our mnemonic history and which we learned in the previous streams and less than fifty percent we can practice day in, day out. Okay, let's just have our goal in mind, we have to complete the fifty percent today. At least we have to pass the fifty percent of them, so let's just hope for the best and let's get started. First one, ah, it's simple as that, I mean, these are the ones which we have repeated the most of the times, I mean, these we can't forget. I mean, I should not forget, so let's just, don't use, I mean, we'll be using mnemonics right now also but let's just not use mnemonics in this. Remember what we wrote and practiced it, how we practiced it like, so I remember it was something like this. Yeah, he was something like this, who was something like this? A, okay, A was something like, I mean, I don't remember A, which I always forget, I think, but this was like. This was like. What like this? Wait. This was like this, no? Wait, how was it? It was double O's, I remember, as a mnemonic sounded, it was double O's on both the sides. So I think so, I mean, I forgot how it was ended, it was like this, it was like this, and it was like this. It's similar to this, no, it's not similar to this, I mean, I think we forgot these two. I did pass this exam because I had remember fifty percent and more, I mean, if you guys can remember these, I mean, congratulations, but. I did focus, forgot about these, I mean, let's just practice it again. Okay, this was something like this, okay? He was, hmm, what was he, let's just use a mnemonic now, mnemonic, E. A, E, U, A, sorry, it's not E, it's A, the word is E but it's, no, no, it's just A, so A. How was A written down? Let's just try to remember that, I mean, uh. He was, it was an apple, for this we use a mnemonic A as an apple. We use Eels as the E, for O we had the Uno card and for A we had, for O we had double O's like the. There was a double O, there was a word which contained double O's and we remember that and then for the E which I forgot. I mean, these two which are, these are two are the ones we had to practice more. Okay, let's just move forward, I would think there is no time to waste, we have to complete the other columns as well, let's just move forward. Ka was, Ka, Ka was. Ki was a key, I remember, it was the key, it was something like this. No, I think, yeah. It was like this only. It was like this, 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 and this. I mean, I didn't do it correctly because I don't have a pen and paper, so you do, you guys have a pen and paper, so please practice it correctly. Something like this, these are the birds' peaks, so it was like this, it was K was a cake, it was like. It was like this and this was ko, was a coin, this was like this. And Ka, I did forget, Ka was something like. Oh God, I did forget this one as well, so these are the ones which we don't really use and we forget. So let's just move forward, Sa, Shi was here, I did know this, Sa was salsa bowl, it was like. Two hands coming from both the sides and then a ball, or then a ball, but this bowl was like this, I think. I think I'm right, we'll recheck all of them. Su was, okay, Su was, I didn't remember, Su, Se, Se was you were saying something, so it was something like. You had eyes, you had nose, you had this, was saying something, right? And Su, Su was, Su. I did forget all of, both of them, I mean, yes, and this was something, I am not sure this was it, like this, so yeah, first Su, what was it? Was Se, Se, it was not Su, it's Se, Se was. Did I write it correctly? Okay, we'll recheck, we'll recheck, we'll recheck everything which we have not yet remembered, so let's just do this as well. Ta would be, I don't remember Ta, Ta was, Ta, so I don't remember Ta. Ti, do I remember any mnemonic for this? I don't remember really, Ta, Ti, E, Tu, No, Te, To. Tu was, I did remember, it was a Tu. Tu was this, Te, Te was. They. I don't remember, Na, Ni, Nu, Ne, No, No was the stop sign, I didn't remember this one. Ne, Ne was, I think, Na was a rope. Na was a rope kind of a thing, there was a man sitting down here, this was a rope hanging around, there was a rope like this. It was something like this, Ni was, Ni, Ni was like a knee, yes, it was like a knee. So we had this, this, and this. So are these two all the same ones? We have to check this one, we have to check this one. Nu, Nu was, Nu, Ne, Nu, Ne, No, No, okay? Ta, Ti, Tu, Te, Okay, these are the ones we remember and how many do we remember really? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen. I mean, we remember only fourteen out of five and two, one, two, three, four, five, twenty-five. If we pass this exam, I think with it, I think we did pass this exam by a little personality. Our goal was to complete a fifty percent of all of them, but yeah, we did pass this exam, so I mean, we are making good progress. Yes, I think we did decide a benchmark from ourselves, so we did clear the benchmark as well. So yeah, let's just see why we didn't remember these, let's just start with these two, why we don't remember this A and O? A for the neck, yeah, it's difficult, so I'll add it down for you guys, it was like this, this, and this. Not really this, like this, and O was, oh, okay, O was like this. Okay, we had a moving circle, like this, okay, I had to remember right now. Ka was, I always forget Ka, I mean, we need to find a good mnemonic for this and I do have to remember this. Ka is this, Su was, Su was, Su, the sprout would come out of the earth, so it was something like this, right? And Se, I mean, Se, I didn't remember Se now, it was not like this. So I mean, we have to do that forty, we were able to remember only thirty, I mean, yeah. Su, Se was something like, it was like this, like this, I mean, first there was a strike like this, then like this, and then like this. And Su was, okay, a Z and underneath we had a C, okay. Ta, Ti, Tu, Te, Tu, not Ta, it's, it's not Ta, it's, wait, we did forget about this pronunciation, it's Ta. And then we had a Chi and a Su and using these words, I remember, this was a tsunami because Su, it's a tsunami, so it's a tsunami like this. Tsunami like this and Xi was a cheese, I remember, yeah, Tsunami was like this, I mean, now we have to go with more. Was like this and for Xi we had to prove it out, okay? So what was Sa then? Sa was, oh, Sa was the opposite one, okay, we didn't make an error over here, Sa was not this, Sa was like this, huh, okay? And Tu was like this, right, right? Ta, okay, Tu was like this, like Xi was like this, I mean, I have to correct it right here. And Ta was a little bit of Ta. Okay, Ta was like this and I did write it down wrongly, I mean, we need to practice the, how we write it down as well. This was like this, this was like this, and this was like this, Xi was like this, this, and this. And Te was like, just like a tell. I had to remember right now, Nu, Ne, the Ne was the one which was complex one. It was this and then we had a Nu, this was a Nu, okay, forgot. Nu was a noodle, there were two chopsticks and a noodle coming out of them and then we had, yeah, noodle has a combined effect. Okay, I mean, we had to, it's all about practicing. We have to practice it again, bro, I mean, it's a difficult language, I believe. Alright, 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 I mean, we did forget a lot of them but yeah, we need to practice it again, everything again. I mean, the sole purpose of our live stream is to see how well do we perform together in remembering how, which we did here in the previous streams. And we are not doing so much better but then, okay, we are better than, we are like average. I mean, average people remember only fifty or sixty percent of what they did in their last class. So yeah, we are on, I think, our eye track but we need to practice it more and we need to efficiently remember in the memories and practice it more. I think that is the only key here to just do this language. Okay, let's just, let's just get started with the two columns, the two remaining columns, right? Okay, let's just get started with them, I mean, yes. We have done this, we have done Ka, Ke, Ku, Ta, and Na, let's just start with Ha, Hi, Hu, He, Ho, Ha, Hi, Po, He, Ho, okay? Okay, let me copy this worksheet on to our X-ray draw workplace. Give me a second, guys. It's big enough, I think. Okay, let's just lock it down and let's start practicing on this. Okay, okay, and then we will do these two columns and then we will take a short break, okay? We do talk about breaks more often, right? So we do have to practice these two columns right now, okay, let's just get started. The first one, it is Ha and let us see how all are pronounced.
Ha.
Ha is pronounced like Ha.
He.
He is pronounced like He.
Who.
Who, who is not pronounced like who but a little bit of F sound, so Fu, not really a Fu but a, but a, how, how do we pronounce like that? Fu or Hu?
Who.
I mean, it's a, it's a Fu but a T-syllant, so Fu, 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 like you are pronouncing her, but you are saying Fu. Like it's like a T-syllant, okay, you have to pronounce it like that. Fu, 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 you're pronouncing her but then you're saying Fu, so you have to do like that.
Who.
Fu, okay, then we have Hey and then we have Hu, yeah. Only this one is a bit different, I mean, the thing is, just as they are written like, so we have one exception in this column, okay? Let's get started, so okay, let's just go into the mnemonics and try to practice it well. Ha has a mnemonic which is, hmm, here in Ha, okay, it does look like Ha in it. So they have told us that they are telling us that you can remember this as a mnemonic H and A itself in the alphabet. That's a good one, I mean, it's a good one to remember, I mean, you are writing H, right? Writing H, we have a good stroke, okay, it will work fine, we have an H and then we have an A beneath that. Okay, this is the one they are telling us? Yes, they did, okay, and then how we do, and how do we write like that? It's Ha only but in this form, okay, so it's Ha only and how do we write like that? It's a first stroke, second stroke is like this, but going around and third stroke is like this. And where's the mnemonic sitting around here? It's here and A. Okay, I think it's clear, I think it's just an H but a curved and a looped H and more like a A in it, okay? Let's just practice it once again, first strike, second strike, and then third strike. First strike, second strike, and the third strike, first strike, second strike, and the third strike. First strike, second strike, and the third strike, first strike, second strike, and the third strike. First strike, wait, first strike, second strike, and the third strike, first strike, second strike, and the third strike. A little bit on top. And a little bit long also, I mean, I'm trying so thin ones. Okay, now it's clear, let's move on to the second one, is this mnemonic is Ha in it itself. Second mnemonic is like a nose, like a heat, he. In other words, it sounds like heat, he, he has a big nose, okay, this is a good mnemonic to remember, he's saying that you can remember this using a nose. Like it's, it's looks like a nose also, okay, and what is the second one? He, when you are smiling. And that is also good, I mean, this is much more better, it's like he, you are smiling, he, 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 he. So I mean, I can write two H's, he's, he's, two pronounced like he, he. And this guy is smiling in a bed and this is a smile also. And this is a smile, yeah, the person is, has a smiling face and is smiling like. Yeah, it looks like, it doesn't look like a smile right now but yeah, it's like a, it's like a smile only. So he is the, would be a good mnemonic for this one. If I like this, like this, and like this, like this, like this, and like this. Like this, like this, and like this, like this, like this, and like this. Like this, like this, and like this. And don't forget to practice it with me, I love you, just grab a pen and paper and practice it with me. Just don't just watch, practice it with me, please, thank you. Let's move on to the third one, so this is Fu, it's a T-syllant but it's a Fu sound, so Fu, Fu. You are, you are pressing your mouth to pronounce her but you are pronouncing Fu, 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 like that. So I mean, you will get the sound basically, it's a fooling, I mean, just say Fu but a little bit of her in it, so it's Fu, Fu, a Fu. Not like that but yeah, you got the point, so this is, the mnemonic for this would be? Fool. Okay, somewhere is over there dancing like a fool, dancing like a fool, okay, and another one? They say Hu, Fu, Fu, Fu as Hu. But how is Hu? Oh, it's a question mark but opposite question mark. But it doesn't match. It doesn't match really. I mean, it's dancing like a fool. I mean, dancing like a fool would be a greater choice, so fool, who is? I mean, the fool who is dancing, so they would be, I mean, I forgot to mention the mnemonic, so this is the stress mind. It is fine and this one is a fool, there's a fool. Okay, like it's like a Z. Okay, like, it's like a Z person who is dancing like a fool and there's a quotation marks right here. I mean, you can remember that like that way, that's a simple one. And then there's a fool person who is dancing like that. Okay, I can remember that like that and wind going beside him. Yeah, that's a, that's a good one, I mean, that's a person who is like that and through the, through the quotation marks or wind blast in front of him, so considered anything. Uh okay. And I'm drawing like the thing. It's looking more like a question mark now, you know, I mean, I do. I mean, the way it changed from this to this, it's an awesome thing. I mean, yeah, I need to practice it, how they are, how the codes are being used, but I think this will work fine as a force. I think this will work fine. Let's move on to the second one and the second last one, we have two waiting for this column, the he. He, sorry, not he, he we have done, it's he, it's he, ha, he, hu. Not hu, but fu, ha, he, fu, hey, hey. Uh hey, uh making a hey sound, help, help, hey, Helen's, hey, okay? And just a hill, hill or heaven? Hey, I think he or heaven is a good one. Heaven for a he, but I think he uh for a hill also does work really well. But he is not known like hill, so I would say it would be the best sounding here, but I mean, I think we will take heaven as the word or he. Okay, and it's like just a hill, it's like hills, okay, I did it wrong, just like, just like hills. Just like hills. Just like hills, okay? And yeah, these are hills, I marked the mnemonic as well, these are hills. Right, and with that, we have completed the second last one as well and last one is only remaining. This is hu, hu as in hu, or hu, 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 like that. Okay, and what would be the mnemonic for this? It's like hu, 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 four arms, hu, 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 and the pillars. Hmm, is it, is it easy to remember or is it like whole note? Hmm, that is, that can work well, that can work well, the whole note. With hu, 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 with hu, hu, hu is good one, I think. We can remember this using hu, 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 hu. And we are drawing a hu, 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 first strike, second strike, third strike, and the fourth strike. And how is hu in here? The Santa Claus with four arms and a pillar. He is going inside the pillar. Okay. I mean, it is better than having a musical note inside that. I mean, who remembers a musical note, I'm not a musician to remember that. Okay, nor I think nor you guys, so let's just remember this using this only. Okay. 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 Alright, this one, no, like that, nice one, but yeah. And this works fine, help me with that, we have completed the second last, last one also. And I'm here completing this H column as well. Now let us complete, let's just fasten our seat belts to complete the last column as well, non, this is the last column. But this is, this is which one, this is? What the, what the hell? This is which column? Ma is where? Wait, let me, let me see if we are of the right track, here it's a no, let me search for here it's a no, chat. Okay, let me just see this. Yeah, just through this, don't open that, please, just want to see this. We have done the first line, second line, third line, fourth line, fifth line, sixth line, right now we have done that. And like that, we have to do the ma, mi, mu, me, mo, okay? So this one, okay, I can see over here as well, I mean, we don't have a chart, we have already posted as well. So yeah, ma, mi, mu, me, mo, these are the ones which we are left with and we have to complete it right now. Okay, I mean, let me stretch a bit, I mean, I've been sitting over here for last one and a half hours, I believe, on this year. I was half an hour, half an hour, I was preparing for the stream and for half an hour, I was trying to start the stream, but for some technical issues or for some reason, it was not able to start, okay, then. For half an hour, we are into the stream. Good. Okay, let us grab the worksheet for this. Okay. Let me allow the thought. Uh so we are good to go, okay? The worksheet is ready and our words are ready, the alphabet's ready. Ma, mi, mu, me, mo, as in that, no exceptions over here. Okay, so uh let us get the mnemonics down the line as well. Are you guys with me? I, I just want to see if everything is working fine, just give me a second. Oh, I missed a chat, so hi, Sartak, welcome to the stream. Sartak, the party is asking, what's your level of Japanese? Um I mean, my level of Japanese is starting level, I mean, it's a beginner level journey. You are having with me and there's no experience with it. Uh so yeah, uh I mean, uh I mean, if I go to see how many levels are there? Japanese levels, I mean, there are five levels and five, I remember till N five. And we are doing the N one level, I mean, we need to have a knowledge about this as well. Okay, and five is a measure, basic Japanese learned in the classroom. So if we are at N five, yes, and for to go to N four and three, I think we need to give examples. So yeah, um and five and four and three and two and months, okay, okay, okay. Hmm, right, okay, let's just uh see. I mean, we will, we will also study about these levels, I mean, we are with the N five level. We'll be, after that, after completing the whole this course, I mean, we, after completing this one, the Hiragana, Katakana and the basic pronunciation, we can move to N, I mean, no, okay. We have to complete N five grammar also, after that we can move to N four. I mean, completing these four points, these, uh let's say, let's, no, these three points, we can move to N four level. Yeah, so I think I have answered your query, Sartak. I'm on N five level, but I mean, I can write in the chat as well, so that it's more clear. Um. Let me write in the chat also. Uh. We are on the, on the N four level currently. No, not N four, sorry, I mean, we are on the N five level. I'm just to pick now. Hmm, okay. I think we are good to go. Yeah, I'm just a pick, okay, I've answered your queries. Okay, let's just move on to this one and I think we are good to go. Okay. Right. Right, 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 let me, give me a second, guys, give me a second, let us just keep things smooth, okay? We are doing good. Okay, let's just resume to where we were. Uh we were, we are continuing, I have how many column? Sixth column, oh no, we completed five columns, sixth column we have done, we are on the seventh column, okay? So ma, mi, mu, me, mo, we are trying, so let's just here at once, if we are pronouncing it correctly.
Ma.
Ma is ma, mi, mi only.
Mu.
Mu is mu only.
Me.
Me is me only and then?
Mo.
Mu and mo is correctly. Hmm, okay, we are doing good, I mean, there are no exceptions down in this one, uh okay? Okay, let us uh start with this one, ma. Um so what is the pronunciation, or sorry, what is the mnemonic we can use for this? Uh the mnemonic we can use for this would be this one, which is um you'll, you are, looks like like the number twenty one. So it's a twenty one, so it's a twenty one drawn in here, uh okay? Hmm, okay, fine, so it's a twenty one, but how is it, how can we combine that with me? Uh I mean, it, sorry, it's ma, ma time. Okay, now can we uh? This one? Why does it, okay? This is the starting point and this is the ending point. No, sorry. This is ma, it's this, okay, oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. I just messed it up, so this is not ma and this is ma and this is me, okay, okay, this is ma. So for ma, we can remember how, what is the mnemonic for this? Um ma, it's more mnemonic, there's a good, not a good mnemonic and baby cries like mama. So I think this is good mnemonic, this is not a good mnemonic for this. Hmm, should I remember this one? Um mother, mother keeping in your arms. I don't know, I don't want to remember it like that. I'm just like, yeah, I can remember through ma, but so there's this, this is this one, so this is the first one which we had, don't have any good mnemonic for this. And we have to practice it, we have to practice it, just like that. So there's the first strike, second strike, and the third strike. I mean, the mnemonic they are telling us to remember is, these are the two arms of a mother and this is a mother. How the fuck can we remember that? Bye, more than mnemonic, no, I mean, we can come up to a good mnemonic ourselves also, but okay, we'll stick to this one, I want now, if I get a good mnemonic, I'll, I'll just share with you guys. So these are the two strikes and the third strike. Two strike and the third strike, two strikes and the third strike, two strikes and the third strike. Two strikes and the third strike, two strikes and the third strike, two strikes and the third strike. So this is ma for you, right? Okay, let's just start the second one also, me, me as in can be remember that using the letter twenty one. And how can we correspond me to twenty one? Okay, me, I am twenty one, okay, so then they are saying is me twenty one. You are actually conversing with anyone and you're saying, oh, me, I am twenty one, so me, twenty one. So that's how it is and you can remember that and the twenty one right down here. So I have to write it down, we have a twenty and we have one. Oh, that's, that is easy, we have a two and then we have a one over here. That's easy, okay? Uh twenty one, like that. Like that. Like that. I like that, so here we are, we complete me as well, so we can remember this using the alphabet twenty one, within the letter twenty one, number twenty one. And then it's a straight two and one, okay? Let's just move forward, we have mo, mo as in um uh mo. This is a cow, they are using the mnemonic as a cow. Isn't it a good mnemonic? To remember it like that, mo as in mu, me, mo, okay, it's mo only, okay, wait, mu. Ma, mi, mu, sorry, ma, mi, mu. Mu as in when the cow is doing mu, so it's mu and then uh it's a cow, I mean, can we get a good mnemonic? It's a cow. Oh yeah, so they are saying there's a cow, uh who is saying mu. Okay, we can remember it like that, no worries, I think we need to practice this, practice this as well. I mean, there are really some, some alphabets like these, they were, there is no good mnemonic to remember. You had to practice it and remember it like that. It's a curve like that and then a curve, it's the first strike, this is the second strike. And I think you guys are practicing with, with me, please, just practice it with me and just don't just watch it, practice it with me. Can just grab a pen and paper, pen and paper and just practice it with me. So here is, this is mu and how to represent it? There's a cow's head, cow's leg and the cow's body and she is spelling mu from her mouth. So that is how we can remember, using a mu and a, this is a cow, please. I mean, my drawing is not good, but this is a cow, okay? So let us just practice it again, so there's a first strike, this is a second strike and I'll go from here and like this. I believe this is the one, yeah, first strike, second strike, it's bit of more curve, but like this. First strike, second strike, bit of more curve and like this. First strike, second strike, bit of more curve and like this. Okay, so it is like this, we have done with the third one as well, let's move on to the fourth one. So we have me with us, what a mess, so that's an I, that's a mnemonic, that's a good one. And we have um wait. Yeah, so we have. Okay, we have a uh here also they are saying Japanese I, so we have to remember this using an I. So this is an I, uh it's an I. Who is watching me, it's like ma, mi, mu, me, me is it like, uh me is? What a mess, you are making a mess, so it's like she is watching me and I'm making a mess, she is watching me and I are, I'm like that one. Yeah, so it's, it does look like a, but it's more, it's like a chopsticks which we remembered previously and then it's like chopsticks and what was the alphabet, we remember the chopsticks, it was like I don't remember the alphabet also, I mean, I can't go from mnemonic to alphabet, but alphabet or mnemonic can go. Okay. This is the first strike, this is the whole second strike, first one, second one. And to mark the mnemonic, I think this is I and she is watching me, this is I, okay? Uh how I get this PDF for practice, can you please share it? Uh which PDF you were asking, Sartak? Uh this one? Uh this PDF or, I mean, which PDF I'm asking, this one, this worksheet? I mean, this worksheet has been mentioned over here as well, I mean, did I mention the resources? Wait, let me see. I mean, uh let me see if I mentioned the resources in the description box, okay, I see that. Uh did I mention the worksheet? Did I mention the worksheet? I mean, yeah, I have mentioned the worksheet. Yeah, I have mentioned the worksheet in the, in the description. I mean, yeah, we can go and check it out in the resources description. I have mentioned all of them, I have mentioned the, uh, if I go and check it out, I have mentioned the practice. Can practice it on Scary Draw, this is a tool they can practice. I mean, I can't, uh, don't have a pen and paper, right? So I can't, uh, practice it using pen and paper, I, I don't have a pen and tablet to stream on. So I use a mouse to practice and a software like Scary Draw to draw on it. But you can, uh, you can use, uh, any software to practice down. A pen and paper would be good. And then, uh, can, uh, you can, uh, use a resource. Tofukus, this is the one which we are using and, uh, this is a good resource, I mean, I have as a author of this resource as well, that can be used this on another livestream. And he was grateful enough to give me the access. And then, uh, Xkaido is the software, then I mentioned the worksheet as well, this is the worksheet we are using to practice. And a Reddit post to get the mnemonics done. I think I mentioned all the resources. In case of any doubt, I can mention the, I think I have mentioned the Notion page as well, right? I have not mentioned the, okay, I'll mention this, uh. Uh, if I remember, I mentioned right now only, wait. Let me mention the. Notion page as well, which I am using. This is my Notion dashboard. So I think it won't be able to access the whole dashboard, but yeah, I can share the Notion page with you guys. Uh, let, give me a second. Hmm, shared with it. How can I share copy link? Copy link for whom, I want to share. Hmm. How can I share that? Oh, this is, there's a button for share, I mean, yeah, publish. I can publish. I have published it. And let me, view site. Yeah. Yeah, I can, uh, share this with you guys. I have published that. Okay. Notion page. Here is the resource for that and save it. So I mentioned the Notion page as well, this resource I have also mentioned in the top of the description, can check it out. This is all the resources and the list of apps you can use. And the schedule and the tips as well. I mean, you can use a resource. Well, let us move with the last one. We are on the last one and this is practicing and let us finish practicing this one. Okay, this was like the first strike was like this. First strike is like this, I guess like it's a long way down like this. First strike, second strike is long way down like this. First strike, second strike is long way down like this, I think I could make a mistake over here. First strike, second strike is long down like this. And the first strike and second strike is long like down like this. First strike, second strike is long time like this. Okay, we made a good progress and we are left with the la- last one, the more one. And then we will be taking a break, short break. Okay, you guys with me? Any questions so far, I mean? Any questions so far? We are doing good, I mean, uh, just tell me once if I've, if I'm doing it, uh, a little bit faster, slow. I'll, I try to keep up the pace of the stream, but I mean, we have a goal of the stream to complete these many things. So for, because of that, I need to speed up or speed down. Okay, let's just move forward, I believe. If everything is working fine. Yes. Let's just move forward. Okay. The last one, the mo. Yeah?
Mo.
Mo. And the way you remember the mo alphabet is by. More, you want to catch more, so you add more bombs. More as in more. Could be a good one, but let me see, but yeah, suggesting us more fish. So yeah, I can, uh, we have to use the word more for remembering this one. And more and I like it's a hook, the opposite hook. And they are grabbing the fish in this. I think good one. So more and more fish you gather, more, you will, you will use this alphabet. More and these two strikes. This is the first strike and a curve like this, second strike, third strike. First strike, 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 second strike, so, uh, second strike, third strike. First, second, third and then first, second, third. And if I highlight this, this is the hook. And these are the fish we are gathering. This is how we remember the word itself. Okay, congratulations, we have completed this column as well. We will practice in this at the end of the stream, but. Okay, we have, uh, we have done these two columns today. Good pace. And how many are we are left with? These three ones. Okay. I think let's have a short break and we'll be right back after a five minutes of break and we'll be, uh, completing these three ones, okay? Yeah, see you after a short take, okay? Thank you so much. Hello guys, hello, welcome back, welcome back, once again on the live stream. How are you guys doing? Guys with me? We are back with the break. I mean, I've been took a long break this time. I promised a five minutes break, we had a five minutes. Right? Hmm, okay. We are left with how many columns right now? Let me check. We left with three columns, two are short ones and one is long one. Right? Okay, let's just start this thing, okay? You guys with me? Let just, uh, let me just see if you are doing good on the stream. Hmm. I think we are doing good on the stream. Okay. Okay, someone asked something. Sartak, hi Sartak. Uh, Bhaiya, I want to ask, can you take, uh, developer classes of N five level? Uh, actually, I'm also just a beginner and want to learn Japanese language. So can you please complete full N five level? Yeah, hi, uh, Sartak, uh, actually, I am not a teacher, first of all, I'm a student. So in this livestream, this is not a livestream where I teach, where I, this is just a livestream where I showcase how I learn myself Japanese language. I use the resources which you all use and we learn it together. And this is not the livestream where I teach people, uh, the Japanese language itself. So I'm not teaching anything, which I'm just learning, I'm just learning my, my way. And maybe you can follow with me and learn yourself as well. So it's just a two-way interaction and a motivation for you as well and for me as well, because I am also a Japanese learning enthusiast. I want to learn this language, the N five level, which you told me, N five level this year. So I'm planning to complete N five level in this year and, uh, this is, I'm just, um, streaming, live streaming, because I can, um. Maybe, uh, with the live stream, I'm keep, I, I keep myself motivated and, uh, other people also can come and join with me. And also get motivation with that and can, uh, learn with that. So that's how I keep this stream. This is not a learning series, this is, sorry, this is not a where I teach, but where we all learn. This is a series where we all learn. So I mean, I'm not a teacher. I mean, uh, not right now, maybe after few months where I, when I can, uh, when I'm able to learn these, uh. Alphabets, the pronunciation, maybe can make short term, short content videos for them. Uh, for those things, for those topics, but right now I'm just on a learning phase, I'm not teaching anything. I mean, uh, I wanted to make myself clear over that part. If there's any doubt, please ask me. Japanese dramas and movies, Hindi Japanese asking, prove what to learn after getting, uh, learning Hiragana and Kathakan alphabets? Yeah, so hi, uh, I did make a roadmap for this. Let me share my screen. Yeah, so I did make a basic roadmap. This is a three months and three months and six months roadmap, uh, which is being divided into three phases. The first phase is where we complete the Hiragana and Kathakana and practice some pronunciation in the phrases. So we complete Hiragana, Kathakana and basic pronunciation of some phrases. We'll pick some phrases and we'll practice those. And in the second phase of three months, we'll tackle N five, the full N five. So these three months and three months and six months is divided like in the ratio. Where we have to complete the Hiragana, Kathakana and basic pronunciation in the first phase. Second phase would be consisting of N five and its vocabulary and kanji and grammar patterns. I mean, this three months is the beginner level, this three months is a bit with, bit of intermediate level to N five. And this six months would be all practicing speaking Japanese language. So we'll be using some, uh, Japanese content online, which is freely available, freely streamed as well, can be streamed as well. And we're making, uh, Japanese friends online. I mean, I'm, I know some, some of my friends are from college and from my university, who knows Japanese, who knows Japanese language? So they'll be helping out me in this phase of Japanese learning, where I can, I will call them on stream and, uh. We learn with them together and maybe they'll, uh, maybe, maybe we'll converse with them. Learn how real Japanese is being spoken and yeah. So I have this plan right now, this plan can change also. Where, uh, when I get to know more about this language and how much time we have to give to every single bit of part. But right now I have this one. This is the first phase of three months, this is the second phase of three months. And this is the last phase of six months of pure practicing speaking Japanese language. That is how I have divided right now, but this can change, this can vary. So I mean, I have addressed your questions as well. If there's any doubt, please ask me. Haniya, Sartak, if you ask me, I'll please conduct N five classes regularly. So I told you, this is not a class, but we are learning it together and yes, I have. I keep my motivation, I'll just, now. I'll just try to keep my motivation high to stream it regularly and, uh, my timing would be in the night ten to eleven and on weekends it would be ten to twelve or something like that. Right now I've decided this timing, but it can change also, but right now for this month, I'll keep it ten to eleven, because, uh, in the morning I have office and I came. I come late from the office and then I have to rest a bit and then I can start streaming. So yeah, that's why I keep kept the night time of ten to eleven. That's basically it. I think it's clear right now. Thanks man for helping me to know what to do after. Wait, let me open it on a bigger screen. Uh, okay. Hmm. Right. Okay, thanks man for helping me out to know what to do after learning Hiragana and Kathakana. I learned all Hiragana and Kathakan alphabet and practice writing every day, yeah. I think, yeah, that's the right way, I know right now. That's the only way, I think, uh, I've, I've consumed many, uh, kind of of these roadmaps and Japanese videos where they talk about this thing. So all of them suggest me this practice way to learn Japanese the right way. I mean, practicing is the only key where you can practice and practice and learn Japanese language. This is, this is the only way. This is the only right way. So yeah. I believe you are on the right track. Let's just move forward. Okay. Very good. Okay, so how many columns do I left with? Yes, there is three columns, okay? Uh. Ya, you, ya, you, you. Ra, ri, ru, re, ro. Wa, 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 wo and ten. Okay, I mean, this is something odd, because they have not, there are no other sounding words for Y and for W also. But it's there for R. I think let's just complete R, then we can tackle all of these six remaining ones. Do we have left to see for R? Yes, we do, let's just copy this. Uh, wait a second, Sartak, I'll read your chat. Hmm. Okay. I lock it down. Hmm. Good. Uh, if you don't mind, can I know what's your education and what purpose of, uh, of your for learning Japanese language? Okay, my education is I have done P tech in, I've done engineering. I've done P tech and computer science. Okay, my education is I have done P tech in, I've done engineering, I've done P tech in computer science and uh, yeah, I mean, uh, my purpose of learning language, of Japanese language, from starting uh, only I had this uh, keen interest to learn this and learn, learn Japanese language. I believe uh, from starting only, I really love Japanese culture, I really want to live in Japan myself and want to interact with those people, not just in English language, but also interacting with their own language makes a little more impact. I mean, uh, I really want to settle in Japan also, but that's something in future. But uh, my full purpose was to uh, learn about Japanese culture, more about how Japanese people live. I myself uh, use some of the ideologies of Japanese culture in my own life. So I'm really inspired by Japanese people, so yeah, I want to learn their language. And I wanted to learn a new language as well because I know English, I know Hindi, I know French from school but I'm, I'm not, no, I want to learn a good uh, language and Japanese is a pretty, pretty, pretty cute, pretty good language, but a difficult one to master, so I wanted to have this thing in my resume, not in my resume, but in my portfolio to uh, learn this language. So yeah, this is not a bigger reason, but yeah, my love for Japanese, Japan and people around them makes me, keeps me motivated to learn this language. I mean, I'm wanting to learn this language in the college days also, but then I didn't got so much time to remember to learn this language. But right now, after office hours, I'm a little bit free right now because uh, I'm not doing so much work, so yeah, that's fine. And huh, you Sarthak, you are from uh, college or you are from tutoring job right now? What about you? Tell me about yourself also. Till then, we'll uh, continue with the series, yeah? Ya was, this is Ya series, this is uh, yeah, yeah, people want Ra, right? Okay. Yes, let's go. So let's just uh, see how these are pronounced first. I'll look at the chat uh, after, let me see how they have pronounced first because I have to complete this as well right now.
La.
Ra is pronounced as Ra.
Di.
He is pronounced as Ri.
Di.
Okay. Ru.
Du.
Pronounced as Ru only.
De.
Re is pronounced as Ri only. And then uh, Ro. Ro is pronounced as Ro only, I think there is no exception in any of those pronunciations, right? Okay, let me read your chat right now. Good night bro, take care. Uh, now I can learn Japanese through your lessons, thanks for teaching me. Well, can you share this video link which you are using for teaching? Uh, I mentioned all those resources down in the description box, you can check it out. I mentioned all the resources, this Notion page as well, which is consisting of all those resources. So I've mentioned all the resources individually and also the Notion page which has all the resources, so you can get all the resources. I'm using the uh, stream and uh, thank you so much for joining in and good night bro. Uh, stay safe, stay healthy and best of luck for your Japanese journey. I'll be grateful if you'll uh, join me regularly with me. I mean, uh, we can share some of your uh, learnings from your end also. And you can practice it with me as well. Okay. Okay, let's just get back. Thank you, thank you. And what's your real name? I mean, I will, I'm curious enough to know that. I mean, this is not your real account, I think Japanese dramas and movies, do you do content on there, on this YouTube channel? And. Okay. Okay, yeah, we were doing this one, okay? Ra. Ra is um, what is the uh, mnemonic for this, there you're saying? Hmm, read, read is, don't know what read. Okay, let me see this one. Rabbit. Oh, rabbit shaped body can be mnemonic. Hmm, it can be a mnemonic, but it's a difficult one, the mnemonic to remember. Uh, I think it's a difficult one. I do content by dubbing dramas, but now I left. Why you left? Why? You lost the motivation to do that consistently or what, what happened? Uh, well, my real name is Akshat and I'm from Chandigarh, right? Oh, why? Nice, nice, I love Chandigarh. I did visit Chandigarh uh, in two thousand twenty-three when I visited Japan and Leknow and every place in Punjab, sorry, Japan, sorry, in Punjab. So I did visit like Chandigarh as well, that's a beautiful place and I'm also a Punjabi if you don't know. My surname is, last name is Katri, I'm a Punjabi as well, so I love Punjab. I love people from Punjab, thank you for watching. Thank you for joining in. Hmm, okay. Okay, R and L sound. It's tongue, okay, three. Okay, let's just practice this as well, it's a rabbit's body. Um. My partner left, so I have no other guide to dub, so I left. Oh, I mean your partner and this uh, YouTube journey or, in which case you were asking, in which case you're telling. So I have to, so I have to, you have to leave for that, okay? Right, I mean, um, I mean, I have, I have uh, experience from the, from over the years is that in YouTube you have to stay consistent. If you don't stay consistent, uh, I mean, uh, it is a tough job to stay con, I mean, it's a tough job to stay consistent and stay relevant in YouTube industry. That is one thing I've learned over the years in YouTube. I mean, I've been following many streamers over the years in my college years as well. So I used to follow these streamers who game, uh, who play game online and do gaming a lot, uh, myself also. So yeah, I've from then, I've heard this and I've experienced it, you have to stay consistent in your things. If you don't stay consistent, then uh, the viewers will not come, the people will not join in, the new subscribers will not come. So if you stay consistent with the content and you be relevant with what you do, what you, what your niche is, I mean, uh, the views will definitely come. This is what I believe. So this is rabbit's body, this is a rabbit's ear you can say. And uh, yeah, this is what they told us to remember. Rabbit's body, the rabbit's ear, this is tail, I believe, can mark a tail as well. Hmm, that's not good body, I mean. Yeah, rabbit's body, I mean, I'll mark a word rabbit as well. Rabbit. For me too, remember in the future. Okay, and how is it? Strike, strike is, is it a U strike? Okay, so this is, first strike is like this, second strike is the body. I mean, first strike can be a ear, second strike can be a body. Okay. Channel partner who dubs other character voice, now I am learning editing and web development, so I'm practicing. Japanese to make my dream come true, to tell a wealth with it, wealth of life in Japan, yeah. I mean, your dream also, I mean, yeah, Japan is a really nice place to live. So yeah, I mean, your partner who did dubs, I mean, you dubbed a real anime uh, uh, into Hindi voices. I love to watch your content, I will, I will, I'll do watch your content after the stream. Okay, so we had these two strikes, the first strike is like a U in the top and the second strike is like this. First strike, second strike is like this. First strike, second strike is like this. I mean, how many animes have you watched till now? I've just uh, for, I've just watched one anime, that is this Demon Slayer and I followed it from starting and the ending to ending part. And no other anime I have followed till now, so that's only one anime I followed till the end right now, Demon Slayer. That is, that is the best anime, best storyline, best animation style, I mean, it's, it's best in everything. Okay. I did pass my twelfth last year and this year I'm a first year BA student, but I'm also obsessed with Japanese culture and uh, their politeness, people and me. I also want to live in Japan, yeah, everybody wants to live in Japan, Japan is such a beautiful country. I mean, look at the country, look at the people, I mean, everything is good about Japan. And because of that, many people want to learn Japanese as well, I mean, I can, I'm, when I used to see these uh, questionnaire logs of, there's one uh, YouTuber who does this questionnaire uh, in Ja, in Japan and most of them are Indians, they speak Hindi, English and Japanese, I mean, many are Indians over there, many are motivated to learn Japanese and settle over there. Yeah, Japan is a beautiful country. That's true, that's true, that's my motivation as well to be in Japan, to learn Japanese, that's, that's why I'm learning right now. Putting my heart and soul into this language, but not heart and soul, but I'm only dedicating one or two hours a day. But like, I want to be consistent enough and uh, I want to learn it every day, so that be consistent in this language is the only thing, practicing it every day is the only way can master this language, I mean, this is a bit harder language, it's not a English type language, where you can learn with the English alphabet, because in French, what happens is in French language, it's like English type language. You don't have to practice its alphabets altogether from the start, but in Japanese, the way of writing, the style of writing is all, all the way different. Then you have to practice it everything from scratch. Me and my friend used to dub Japanese movies, but he left as he got his visa and went to Australia. Oh, nice, he went to Australia for further studies, so I left this channel and deleted all the videos. Why would you delete all the videos? I mean, keep all the videos, I mean, you can archive all the videos. Then maybe in the future, if you plan to restart your uh, your YouTube channel, maybe you can unarchive those videos and then re-upload. Maybe uh, I mean, uh, you shouldn't delete those videos. Maybe in the future, if you want to restart the channel, I mean, it would be difficult for you to re-upload all the videos again. Okay, it's your, it's your choice, I would not say anything in that, but yeah. I mean, uh, okay, your friend left for Australia, he's been, have higher studies in Australia, that's nice. I mean, my friend is also, my cousin is also living in USA for higher studies. That's good, that's good. Okay, we are done with this one, I'll mark the mnemonic as well, so this is the rabbit's body, rabbit's ear and maybe can say rabbit's ear as well. This is a little bit difficult to remember, right? Okay. Hmm. Let's move on to the second one, then it's a Ru, Ra, Ri, okay, we forget about a Dina, okay, this is a Ri. We're done Ra. Then we are on the Ri. Uh, okay, Ri as in for reads. And um, it's pronounced like combination of Ru and Gru, root, okay, this is, okay, Ri is this one. Ri is pronounced as Ri in read. Wait, this was, okay, this was Ra, this is a Ri, this is a Ri, I mean, I got confused in between, yeah, this is Ri. But this is different, this is different, why is that so? Uh, they have mentioned that. They have mentioned it like this, Ri is mentioned like this in this way and why is this mentioned like this in this? Why is it different? I mean, if these two are following this, I think there's something wrong in this one, this is not updated properly. I think Ri is this, and what is a mnemonic, there is reads, oh yeah, reads can, reads is a good way to learn this. Ri is going from, I mean, this is a good mnemonic, Ri is going from this one, reads. Right. Uh, well, I watched a Japanese movie named even The Love Disappears From The World, uh, My Tony and a few more movies. Oh, the, the Japanese movie's name is Love Disappears From The World Tony. Oh. I'm not sure about that. I've not watched many uh, anime, I've just followed one from heart and soul and I've watched uh, other animes for some time and left. And I was able to complete them. So I have a few more movies, anime like uh, anime like uh, Hayoka, Tokyo Ghoul, Honemia, Tokyo Revengers, Bye Family, it's a difficult way to pronounce, but yeah. Right, uh, so you know a lot of animes, right? I mean, you could suggest some of the beautiful animes I can watch in my free time, but I don't really get a free time. Where can, uh, you are learning self from online sources or taking any batches for Japanese? Uh, no, I'm learning, uh, I'm learning myself only, I'm not taking any online classes or batches. I'm not planning it right now, maybe I can uh, follow it in the future, not right now. I'm not, not taking any batches, I'm just learning myself from online sources and more other people are recommending me to follow. Great content, thank you so much. And uh, there is Sarthak Bhaiya, you can learn like Hiragana and Kathakana alphabets on your own, but further you have to join my, join an institution. Yeah, right, many people suggested that, I mean, alphabets you can learn, but for pronunciation and the phrases, you have to join somewhere, you can, I mean, uh, speech coach would be good, I mean, where you can learn and uh, I mean, you have to hear someone pronounce you those words and then you can pronounce it again and then, yeah. I mean, uh, I, somebody did, I don't know, did recommend me to join a patch of online classes of Japanese, but. Hmm. Bhaiya, you can see Demon Slayer original language or Hindi dub? I mean, I don't see that, I don't see that, I see in original language, I use subtitles for, to, to uh, to see what is happening, I use subtitles. Because in Hindi dubbed, I mean, we lost the, we lose the touch in watching anime in Hindi dub. I, I, I really don't want to watch anime in Hindi dub, I, I watch in a language only. I mean, we lose the interest, I mean, if I watch, if I try to watch in Hindi dub, I'll lose interest. Maybe the interest will be there because of the animation, but I'll lose that trust. The whole interest is because of the Japanese language, how they pronounce it. Can, you can watch any other, if you love, uh, you can watch anywhere if you love horror, mystery anime. Uh, can watch, other, another, anime name is Another, okay. Another, another anime. Hmm, oh, this one you are recommending me. I can try this, this is seven point five stars on IMDb, that's good, and on Autumn tomatoes. Okay. I'll mark it down maybe. I'll, I'll, I'll watch this. I'll try to, I'll, I'll see this if I can, I mean, it's looking good from the perspective, can I see the images as well? Hmm, the animation style is good. Good. And what is the storyline? A dark horror fantasy anime with a touch of romance, oh, romance horror, that's a new genre. I would love to, I would love to watch it. Okay, thank you for this, for assisting me this. I'll try to watch this. Uh, let me, let me complete this, uh, this column, right now, I mean, uh, my goal was to complete this column at least today. So let me complete this column and then I can chat with you guys, okay? Let's just complete this column. Hmm, okay, I have completed uh, the Ri part, I was left, I was left to practice. So these are reads over on this one, so I can mark the mnemonic as, these are reads going on this one, can learn like this. And to practice it like this, first strike is like this, second strike is like this, first strike, second strike, 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 first strike, second strike. Okay, we have completed the second column, second row as well, let's move on to the third row. Okay. You guys with me? Okay, let me, uh, okay, it's good now. The third one is Ru, Ra, Ri, Ru, we are on Ru, okay? So we can remember Ru as, it's a three, yeah, it's, it looks like a three. And a loop at the end, that's good. Okay, so root, oh, Ru, root, oh, we can remember the root uh, mnemonic, this is a good mnemonic, root. And a root, maybe a root and a loop. Can, we can remember like that and so three, basically a three with a loop inside that. Three with a loop inside that, three with a loop inside that, three with a loop inside that, three. Okay, three. Three and then we have three. Okay, we're done with this one also, I'll mark the mnemonic, the mnemonic is, there's a root with a loop, okay? Guys with me? Okay. Hmm, we are on Ri. Hmm, we are on re. Ri, we are left with two only, let's just complete these two and then I can chat with you guys, okay? Okay, let's just complete this, re, we are on rich, rich or re.
De.
Ri, it's a ri, ri, not re, not, not R sounding words, ri, it's. Ri, ri, and uh how do you use the mnemonic as, it's a bit difficult one. But it's similar to the previous one as well, I've seen this one. I did see a one which was like this. It was like this and this one is like this. I mean, it's similar. Hmm, like this, oh, on the, on the loop as well. Okay, it's not a big difference, but yeah, there's a loop in this and there's not a loop in there. I mean, many of the Japanese alphabets are similar, many are similar, it takes, it makes a confusion in that. It creates confusion sometimes, so yeah, uh what is the mnemonic we need to remember for this? Raining, raining and lightning, oh, raining and lightning can be a good mnemonic, it's raining also, it's lightning also. Rain can be a good one. Rain can be good one. And it's like this and second strike goes like this, all the way down there. What are your PC specs? My PC specs, this is not a PC, I'm streaming, I'm streaming on a laptop right now. This is an idea pad gaming laptop, and I, I want to build a PC, but I have. But I'm not able to build it right now, I want to build a PC for streaming as well, but this is a laptop. And this laptop comes with a sixteen GB RAM and uh, sir, sir, thirty, uh. Twenty, wait, what was the processor for this? I mean, uh, forgot the processor. Hmm. PC keep on expired, yes, I do, I do know about this, let me see that, uh. How do you see the PC specs? I don't know, how do you see that, I, I mean, I have this one, idea pad. Gaming, idea pad gaming laptop three, some kind of, this is I have, this one I have, right now, I'm using this one. So can see the specs for this. This is the one I'm using right now, let's open this. Oh, it. This was the one I'm using right now for streaming. And it is RTX, it's, I think it's RTX thirty, fifty? I think it's thirty fifty, thirty fifty, thirty sixty, I'm not sure. Oh, if I close that, then I will see this later. Okay, wait for raining. This is first strike is like this, oh, that's a bull strike, second strike is like this. First strike is like this, second strike is like this, first strike is like this, second strike is like this. First strike is like this, second strike is like this. First strike, second strike is like this, first strike, second strike is like this, okay? Okay, now, hmm. Okay. Okay, and what is the mnemonic for this? And the mnemonic for this is a lighting and a rain and raindrops, I can say, good mnemonic to remember right now. Fair enough, fair enough, right now, we are left with the last row, let's just complete this also. This is last.
No.
And it's a three as well, what the hell, there are three threes, two threes in this row, in this column, sorry. That's great, I mean, what is used for this, three only. Uh ro for rubies, 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 rubies. Root, throat, no, this is not a good, not a good mnemonic, rubies rolled away. Ha, rolled away could be a one, uh I mean, uh. Oyasumi Ronit-san, oh, thank you so much, I mean. Let me see what oyasumi means. I'm not sure about this, I don't want to portray a different meaning of the word, I'll just myself check. What that mean, good night, good night, good night, good night, Akshit. I did pronounce your name correctly, uh. Right? Hmm. Good night, good night. And have a, have a happy journey of learning Japanese YouTube. Okay, let me. Okay, this is like this and this is a three, rubies rolled away. Rubies rolled away, rolled away. Three, three were rolled away, three, rolled away for three, okay. The last one is the last one, last one. Okay, 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 wait, eleven, good, yeah. Last one is done, okay, we are over with it. This is also completed, completed marked, we are, we have done three columns today. And we are left with these two, which are seems complicated right now. Uh these two seems complicated, I don't want to do it right now, I mean, this is. I mean, this is it, we will do it today, I mean, we have done enough for today. I have done this, we have done this, we have done that. Good enough, good enough practice, so in total, we have done eight columns in Hiragana, we have to practice it a lot to do it. Yes, Akshit, right, yeah, I take you number your name. Okay, hmm. So we have done eight columns. Okay, okay, and the left ones are complicated ones, this is a complicated, this is complicated, this is easy one. This is also an easy one, these were hmm similar, this is complicated, this is easy, this is like this only. This was, what the hell, wa and re is two, two, this was so similar, just a curve. Oh my god, what the hell, how can you make these two same? Ri and wa is looking too similar, too similar, bro. Just a more curve in it and there's a less curve in, this is sharp, this is not sharp, I would, I would have gone like that. Okay, I mean, it's a good post, we did this today. Good with the progress, good with the progress, we have to, to this, okay. Okay, okay. I mean, uh I think we have accomplished our goal of today, we were, we were, uh. Our goal was, of today was to complete these three at least, these three at least today and we did complete them. The practice is part, we'll see, but yeah, we did complete these three at least. Okay. Yeah, but yeah, tomorrow also we'll continue our Japanese learning sessions. Uh right now, we have completed around eight to nine columns, only two columns are there. So tomorrow, we'll be completing those two columns and with that, we'll be practicing Hooli Raganah again. With the monies, with everything, with phases also, we'll try to complete that also, but then uh. Tomorrow also, the same timings will be there, we'll be streaming from ten to eleven. Hopefully, I'll, I'll can't promise tomorrow's uh stream, because I have to go somewhere in the morning. And if I get back on time, I will stream. And thank you for joining in, I hope you liked the stream and we did plenty of. Uh Japanese and plenty of anime as well, uh thank you so much for tuning in, this is me, Ronit signing, bye bye. And before going, can, have, you can enjoy the song, bye bye.